Brian, I made you co-host.
Thank you.
It's recording now. Just so you know. If I, I'm afraid if I stop the recording, that I'll forget. I'm going to let some board members in. But I'm leaving others kind of hanging in the waiting room. Hi, Al.
There, there we go. Unmuted.
How are you?
Well. Another day. In the jungle, I guess. I don't know what else to say. It's been interesting.
Yeah.
Probably. More than I've ever expected. You know, so. You know, a lot of sides being chosen and. Just. I, I personally. I think it's unfortunate that we can't have a good dialogue about all the different aspects of it.
We are being recorded. I'm just giving you that warning. Yes, I agree.
You know, and I, I think the dialogue. Will happen over time and.
Yeah.
I think people want to be involved in not only expressing their views, but also. Getting some feedback as to what that means for their. Children in school and. I think that's all fair. So. So that's about it. We'll have, we'll have more to say later.
I don't think that's what this is about, though.
No. No.
Not tonight's meeting.
No. But it has been. Has been interesting and challenging and thought provoking and. All over the map for me. And I would have expected probably for you and your staff too.
It's been time consuming.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, that's the tricky part, getting to the stuff that we need to do and then. Having lots of other.
Things, things.
To do.
You're right, you know.
I'm glad it worked for your schedule.
Thank you. Yeah, we've, we got about eighty, eighty-five percent of it done. And I've got to run back up there. Either tomorrow or Thursday and Thursday is another PT day.
No shortage of stuff, right?
Yeah.
No shortage of stuff.
Yeah. You know, the PT days are really tough. I. I. Sometimes get washed out after the, a major PT day. I did that, that day you called I. I was hoping that would be a good day, but I felt, I felt that. For at least two days after, just in a recovery mode.
So Kim, I just want, want to let you know, I'm looking for board members to come up so that you'll have them in your view. And then I will admit everybody else at once.
Okay.
If it comes to six thirty, though, and people aren't on, I feel like I need to invite everybody all at once.
I won't start the meeting. Thank you. That's helpful to me and. Hopefully Brendan and Erin will help me keep an eye on things as well. Beth, when we, if we should move into executive session to discuss the legal memo. I, my recommendation is that the, the, everybody else in the meeting remain on mute. That there not be a meeting outside of the meeting hosted by the district without board present.
Yep.
And. If there are public. To be heard, it will be after board deliberation before board vote. And at that point, it will be a limited amount of time and a limited amount of seconds for people to voice their. Opinion if. I'm not exactly sure mechanically how to go about it, but if we have people on both sides, I would prefer a balance. And I'm wondering how obnoxious it is if I ask for people to raise their hands if they're interested in speaking. We have however many. I'm not going to let it go more than fifteen minutes. It is a board decision and. If there are. It's one issue. So if there's people up or down on it, perhaps it could be instead of raising your hand, if you wish to speak. Raise thumb up if you wish to speak in favor of the complaint, thumb down if you wish to speak against the complaint. Is that reasonable? I, I really mechanically don't know. It's not something Chris and I talked about. It's usually unappealing to do it that way. Hi Scott, hi Diane.
Hey there.
I don't know how else to do it and establish some sort of balance. When we've done it, like at the SBA, we like have. You know, two, two microphones that people step up to and you know visibly what you've got in the waiting, in the wait.
But you're not asking for public. To speak now. You're just talking about board members.
It, no, 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 no. Board will speak. It's a public meeting. So while it is not warned on the agenda. In speaking with Chris. After board deliberations before the board vote, we can provide a limited amount of time.
Okay.
With not more than, I mean, he recommended not more than forty-five seconds per person and, you know, not more than. Maybe ten or fifteen minutes. I mean. I think what I will do is ask how many people wish to speak, if at all, after we've deliberated.
Yeah, in some meetings I've, I've listened to whether a great number of people that. If the comments are duplicates to, you know.
Yeah, I can invite people not to duplicate the comment.
Yeah.
Again, the, there's, I will, I will, I will reiterate that. The number of people that may be attending could be. Extreme by our usual standards.
I know we've got more than a hundred registered, Diane.
Okay, well, all right, then you already know. There, there was a letter that went out. Somebody responded to an Annie Cooper post about having this meeting this evening, which she does generically. She's not picking on us. It's just generically that she does this. And somebody said, oh, yes, there was a letter that went out for, for people to attend and. Given the correspondence that has been incoming. It really sounds like people think that this is a hearing that they're listening to and not what the intent is here.
Right. I, I make that clear right up front. And that our purpose of this meeting is in response to receipt of a formal complaint and pursuant to our policy. So, you know, hopefully our, our handling, our deliberations will. Make clear the work we're doing in this, in the course of this meeting. Brendan, I don't know, it may not look like you're in a position to be my timekeeper, but. Chris said as a public meeting, we will. Have time and space for public to be heard. And I can prescribe that to be after the board has deliberated before the vote. For a limited amount of time. And not to exceed forty-five seconds per statement.
Going to let people in at six thirty.
Okay, so between you or Aaron, when, and I.
All board members can unmute themselves. Is that possible? No.
Beth, if you can mute everybody, we could unmute, correct? Or no?
Yeah, I'm going to try to unmute all the board members. It's just things are moving fast.
Yeah.
Well, I, well, I, on a, on a, on a lighter topic. I've been getting tons of, of what to me feels like professional spam. Did we sign up for any of this stuff on email? Do we, you know, I mean, it's. Everything and anything from all kinds of businesses and, and such.
They probably get your name from the website. They probably think you are a person that works, so they're going to send you a bunch of.
So in other words, I, I can just, I have no problem disregarding and hitting delete on these puppies.
Yeah, okay. You can also, Diane, look at the email and scroll down and see if the very bottom in like size six font says unsubscribe.
Okay, because there's things like Thrive Lee and, and there was some stuff from your speaker and. And it's like, and go on, some of this looks like it might be worthy and some of this stuff is just, no, okay, this isn't me. I don't work here. I just supervise.
Okay.
So I just thought I'd get, you know, get that piece out so I could hit delete a lot more often.
Not always so easy, but that does make sense to me.
Oh. Box is getting full. Dog got it.
I am checking to see that all board members are in.
Kim, can you just do a technology check? Make sure all board members can unmute themselves?
Can all board members unmute themselves?
Anyone having a problem? No?
Andre, can you not unmute?
There you go.
Okay. On another note, Beth, could you also, I don't sure how to do it, but I've also been getting some emails. To what Andrew Roy, who I believe is on yours, is on the staff. And I've been trying to forward the corrections to the author. But that might be something to, uh, but I'm not sure how, but there's some of the messages I've gotten there. They're not really intended for me.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank.
I know it does pop up. You have Brendan had his hand raised and Aaron had, looks like she has.
I couldn't hear for a minute, but I'm good.
Can you, I think Aaron can't hear or be heard right now.
She's on mute.
I think maybe the other Aaron.
Oh, now I can unmute. I couldn't unmute. Sorry, it was like charades.
It was good. I got that. Yeah, having two errands like that is.
Sweet. Yeah. Are all board members able to unmute now?
Yes.
What about Iris?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Good job, Iris.
And Kelly, great. Okay, I, I think hell, hell, the gang's all here, folks. All right, I will call the meeting to order at six thirty-four. And the first thing I will do is add an agenda item for. Executive session to discuss a legal memo if it is deemed to be necessary by elected board members. So that may happen in the course of discussion of the first agenda item. And at, at the time at which board members are interested in doing that, after introduction of the, the meeting and topics. Then I would invite board members to make a motion to that effect. All right, so I want to begin by making clear that this is not a hearing. It is response to a formal complaint pursuant to board policy A1. And the purpose of this meeting pursuant to that policy is to consider a formal complaint that was received. And that policy is board member conflict of interest with states. Policy is the ethical and legal duty of all. School board members to avoid conflicts of interest as well as the appearance of conflicts of interest. Defines conflict of interest as meaning a situation when a board member's private interests as distinguished from board members' interests as a member of the general public. Would benefit from or be harmed by his or her actions as a board, as a member of the board. When a conflict of interest claim against a board member is brought to the board in writing. And is signed by another board member or a member of the public. And the member, board member against whom the claim is made does not concur that a conflict in fact exists. The board procedures will be followed. The following board procedures will be followed. Upon a majority vote of the remaining board members. Or upon order of the chair, the board will hold an informal hearing on the conflict of interest claim. Giving both the board member and the person bringing the claim an opportunity to be heard. That's, that's the policy that's relevant here. To be clear. This meeting is not a hearing on the conflict of interest claim. But rather a meeting to discuss whether, if the contents, contents of the claim are true, could this constitute a conflict of interest? Then to determine if we believe that a hearing is necessary by a majority vote of the board. So I just wanted to make clear what this is and what this isn't. And I want to remind everybody that we will conduct this. Within a respectful tone and with respectful words. And that we will do so with a degree of professionalism that's appropriate. For us as board members and community members attending a board meeting. And per the policy, Elizabeth and I have communicated regarding whether or not she concurs with the complaint. Of board member conflict of interest and I'll invite Elizabeth to make a brief statement regarding whether or not she concurs that a conflict exists. This isn't an opportunity to present a defense. But rather a brief statement to address whether or not she concurs that her actions constitute a conflict of interest. And if it's determined that a hearing is necessary, there'll be an opportunity for Elizabeth to present a defense at that time. Elizabeth, do you want to?
Um, yeah, you're right. Thank you, Kim. The complaint brought, brought forth against me, I do not agree with it. It's brought, it was brought forth against me on May sixth. It has no merit and it's based on false accusations. The first false accusation is that I wrote an article utilizing a title with racist and sexist undertones, when in fact I did not author nor title that article. The second false accusation is that I benefited in some way due to this article. Again, since I, since I did not author it, I did not receive payment nor any personal gain from it. The complaint then goes into detail that I have a crusade against equity work, when in fact what I did was ask questions of our equity director. Questions in which members of our community have asked me. I, I uphold my responsibility as a school board member to make certain that the community and parents receive full transparency in their schools. And that I represent their desires and goals for our district. I am beholden to our constituents and not to an agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. All right, in that Elizabeth is the subject of the complaint, she's recused from any further board discussion regarding the complaint and from the vote. If board members wish to discuss the legal memo or guidance. Then it would, now would be an appropriate time for a, an elected board member to make that motion.
I'd like to make that motion, please, Kim.
Thank you. And would you like me to read the motion, Aaron, or do you have?
If you don't mind.
Sure. Um. Pursuant to Title I, Section three one three, A1F, to discuss confidential attorney-client communication. Made for the purposes of providing professional legal services to the body. And finding that premature general public knowledge would clearly place the public body or a person involved at a substantial disadvantage. Does somebody want to say so? I think that was Aaron, so moving.
Yes, so moved.
Okay, so elected board members exclusive of Elizabeth, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, so public, I think Beth is going to move elected board members exclusive of Elizabeth into executive session. Public will remain on mute during that time and the board will return for a discussion of the. The complaint with respect to whether or not we will hold a hearing. And again, I'm going to remind people of the need for professional decorum. And respectful communication. I, I think we probably are within our rights to turn off video as well. But I feel as though this is not the place for platforms. I am inviting people again to come to this conversation respectfully. And with a degree of kindness and generosity. This is not a process any of us have been through. So the board, I think, is going to, Beth, are you ready to send us into executive session?
I am working on that and also are you inviting student members and?
No, the students will. The students will not be attending and we, with the opportunity to potentially invite in. Our attorney who is available by call. Mr. Bailey, I'd like for you to take down your sign, please. Thank you. Um. So I think that's probably. It would not be necessary. If necessary, we can come out and invite you in.
That's, that's fine. I'm trying to get everybody. I'm going to open the room and then I'll look or a board member can speak up. There's just so many people on here. I'm looking Liz in the list. I'm not finding it. There's supposed to be a public order. Did you get an invite, Liz? I felt like I'd put you in the room. No, you didn't get an invite. And Scott.
Which one?
You, Brown. Brown. I am not seeing you in the meeting. Brian, do you see them? This is like.
I see Scott in the meeting.
You do see Scott. Okay.
Yeah. Is it just one room that you've assigned?
There is, yep. Yeah. Oh, there's so many people. This is harder than a leadership team when I have to do this. So Liz, you are supposed to go, right?
Your guess is as good as mine.
I am going to send you there. I think I'm finding you. It keeps moving on me when somebody comes in, so it's like. Did you come in as, and I know that's a weird thing. Did you come in as Liz Katie or is it as?
No, it's one word.
Yeah.
L I C C A D Y.
When I tried to correct it, I just ended up muting myself and you did, Brian.
So.
Beth, are you able to see when we have board members?
Hey Beth, that was weird.
Yeah.
I told it to leave the room and it put me in, I had to choose to leave the meeting. I haven't had that happen before.
Sometimes it happens.
Alright, so I got into a snafu, alright, I understand.
Is Al back with us?
Well, he too might have had to rejoin the meeting, so.
Yeah, I went down the wrong hallway, but.
Well, yes, the wrong hallway, yes.
That did happen for me as well, honestly, so you think by now we've done enough of these, but.
Well, it was weird, I hit the click, click to leave the room, but we, still of us, some of us were hanging out. It was a little frustrating.
Is Al back?
Yes, I think, if he just has Al, I'd just let him in.
There's Al.
It looks like everybody's here.
Thank you, thanks for your patience, folks, and now the board will, having reviewed legal opinion, come back to have a conversation regarding the complaint as it relates to our policy. So deliberation, conversation, I'm going to try my best to keep our conversation to that lens, and I invite board members to do that as well. And again, Elizabeth, you're still recused from the conversation and the vote. We'll be invited back in to our conversations a bit later. But student board members, you are welcome to board deliberation on the topic. And public will have an opportunity after the board has had the chance to deliberate and before the vote. I want to let people know that will be, depending on how many people wish to speak, the public comment section will be 10 minutes and 30 seconds, or if there's fewer than 20 people, it'll be able to be a little bit longer than that, just to give people a heads up. Alright, so fellow board members, would you like to share thoughts as we consider this complaint? And the complaint is up at our website, now I believe, I know board members have it as well. We needed to redact some personal information and view this as a sensitive personnel matter, so while not confidential, treated it a little differently than our other materials until we could take care of redacting.
Kim?
Yeah.
I just wanted to bring up a point in referencing one standard in our policy that I think can be implied to the allegations in the complaint would be that, from the policy, a board member will not give the impression that his or her position on any issue can be influenced by anything other than a fair presentation of all sides of the question. And so I do think that it's incumbent on us as board members to be impartial in our work for students, families, teachers, and staff of the district. And if we want as board members transparency, conversation, and communication on topics, then that must be first in our minds at all times. And that's.
Thank you. Thanks, Anne. Would other board members like to share thoughts regarding the, that's their opinions regarding the complaint and our policy?
Kim, I'd like to speak if I may, this is Brendan.
Please.
Sorry, I can't be on video at the moment. So I carefully examined the wording of the allegation, and I also compared it to our existing policy. And, you know, our existing policy, I think, is taken from a template from the Vermont School Boards Association website where it's really mostly concerned, the majority of that policy is really concerned with financial impropriety and a conflict of interest where money, taxpayer money, may be in jeopardy in some way. And so while I agree with the statement that Erin just made, I don't believe that there really is enough evidence in the allegation that matches with our code, with our policy, excuse me, that justifies, justifies or necessitates a hearing in this matter, thank you.
Thank you, Brendan. Now that I saw Andre's hand.
Sure, thank you. As a board member, one thing that we must also realize is that we're not always going to be in agreement or disagreement with the consensus as presented and as individual board members, we do have that right to be in disagreement or agreement with anything that is presented to us. But the, I concur with Brendan and Erin regarding the nature of this complaint. Here's one thing I want to point out is that the board member did not author an opinion as a board member, but authored the opinion as a community member. And I think that's a distinction that needs to be realized, nor did they author the article in the, what was quoted. So I don't think it falls within the realms of the board policy regarding improprieties or conflict of interest of a board member, thank you.
Thanks, Andre. Would anyone else like to speak to the complaint and the policy from our board?
I think the only thing that I would add to follow up what Andre said, which I do agree with what he said, the only thing that I would just add to that would be, though, that if we are an elected member of this board, I don't think that we can simply just say, you know, depending on what forum we're speaking or posting, you know, we can't just opt out by saying, "I'm speaking as a community member." There is a broader responsibility, once again, this is in my opinion. We don't just get a, I don't want to say free pass, but you know, just by saying, oh, and by the way, I'm just saying this as a community member, I mean, I think being on the board, there is a little bit of an added layer of responsibility in that. Andre, I don't know if you agree, but I just, I just wanted to add that. I feel free to follow up with, you know, what I said.
I hear what you're saying, because in the previous employment, one thing that was always, we were always told was do not embarrass the service with your actions outside your work or, so that, to some, that's where I think I understand what you're saying, and I agree in part with what you said.
Thanks, Andre.
I think, Erin, to your point, we all wear multiple hats, and so I think that is our challenge in participating as elected members and how we carry ourselves and represent ourselves, or how others perceive. Our representation matters, and it's spoken to in our code of ethics, so we have that on the agenda to review as well when this conversation is complete and this action has been decided upon. Are there any other board members who want to speak to the complaint and the policy? I think if you raise your yellow hand, you'll come to the front for me, because I have a lot of screens, a lot of panels. I'm not seeing others, Al, did you, I couldn't tell if you were. No, okay. I can't tell if we're on, you're on mute, Al, I just want to.
No, I just concurred with the previous comments, and the complaint really did not meet the board policy A1 criteria.
Thanks, Al. Any other board members, students? Not putting anybody on the spot, it's totally fine.
Actually, Kim, I'll say one thing, that the, I understand the perception of the complaint. It doesn't rise to our current policy, but I understand why people feel unsettled and, you know, wearing my many hats, I could understand how somebody can misperceive any of the numerous positions that I've been elected or appointed to. And when you have those positions, you get a certain ball of your knowledge. Some of the pieces that come with that is that you've got to be upfront and express that it is your opinion and your best of your knowledge and that you are being truthful with the constituents, because they've put a lot of trust into you. And I just wanted to say that I think I can understand why people are ruffled by this, and I just want to express that.
Thanks, Diane. Going once, twice on board numbers? Okay, I think then, as I described, I'm going to ask for people, as we do often when we do public to be heard in the beginning of a meeting, to indicate by raising their yellow hand if they wish to speak. And I can then, you all come to the top, if we have more than what is available for the time we have, we're either going to go alphabetically or in the order they come in. I want to give people enough time, because I know how many folks are here and interested in being heard. If, I believe people can probably, okay, I was just going to say, if, for whatever reason, people are having trouble raising their hand, if you're able to unmute, I think you can shout it out, but you should find your hand under reaction. We're probably.
Yeah, I'm having trouble finding.
John, did you find it under reaction?
Let's see, where do I go?
It's not there.
It was like a smiley face that about them under reaction.
Uh, no, not there, what do you know?
Huh, okay.
Anyway, if you can take that under advisement, here, I can give you a yellow hand.
Yeah, thanks, John. Well, I know you came in in the first 20, so I will add you to the list. But I'm still going to ask folks to unmute if they can until we're clear, and then I think I'm seeing those hands come to the top on my pages, and I'm gonna.
Yeah, Kim, it looks like we maybe do about 30 to 45 seconds each, based on the numbers I'm seeing.
Yep. Yes, I think we could be able to do. Yeah, I think we can do that and I think we're going to be able to go with. Believe we've got 45 seconds probably. Well, they're still coming in, so I think I will. Invite people in case others wish to raise their hand later to keep their comments. To 30 seconds if possible and you will be cut off. By 45, I think, right? And I'm just looking, I see eight hands right now, nine, including John. Okay, and are you able to be the clock keeper? And I'll be the hand watcher.
I'll be the clock keeper and. I I can't mute people though if they go over, so. I'll just have to raise my handers. I don't know how you want me to do that.
And I I think that if we get to 45 seconds, if you can mute, please, thank you. And Erin, if you can give people a warning at 30 seconds and then you can say 45 and that's new. I hope I just hope folks can help us. In giving people the respect of of balanced time here.
You don't want to have to mute anybody. Yeah.
Yeah, I really hope I appreciate you all helping us out on this. This is new to all of us, so.
Everybody.
All right, so I will start with Eric, please. Eric Bailey.
Oh, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Liz was elected by the up until now silent majority. She's not a racist. She's just a breath of fresh air of common sense. And fiscal responsibility this board so desperately needs. As far as critical race theory, while there are there may there are some places in the United States that. You know, minorities have less opportunities because of finances. I think that critically, I think that bring you know, bringing down the the bar is not right. Bringing up. The people impoverished is the right thing to do. And in Vermont, we don't have to worry about that. We have Act 60. So they're funded lovely regardless regardless of income. That's why we pay so many taxes in Essex to pay for. You know, towns that don't have as much.
So that's 30 seconds, Eric.
So I just would like the board to, you know. Have a little bit more understanding and such of those folks that don't agree with their point of view. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Ray Garofano, you are next.
Thank you. Thank you for the board for the time and the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to express my concern that this complaint was publicized widely before the board made it public. And sensitive personal information was. You know, in the hands of national Republican media. Which is really concerning to me for our community. I feel like if Ms. Katie is representing. The constituency in Essex, Vermont and Westford, then we should keep those. Interactions in our local community and the attention that this is getting nationally is really, really.
Ready? I'm sorry. Excuse me. I'm so sorry. That's 30 seconds.
No problem. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Christine Stone.
Hello, thank you very much. Again, I'm part of the silent majority, obviously. And I've had many issues with the school board and things going on in the school. And we are consistently, we're politely listened to always. Everyone's extremely nice. But nothing ever happens. None of our concerns ever make it to a board meeting. We're literally not included in anything. Which is why we elect.
Everybody mute that's not speaking currently? Christine, are you fat? Christine, I'm sorry, I.
I'm sorry.
Did you finish?
No.
Finished.
Well, I thought you cut me off, so I I did. I just was complying.
No, I didn't. I'm sorry. I don't know who that was. It was just some kind of.
I'm so sorry. I was being complacent. I'm not that difficult.
No, no, no. Please continue.
Okay. So it's actually very concerning to me what's going on. I mean, there is no. Representation in the State House. There's no representation at the school. Of course, everybody wants my money and anybody who disagrees money. But we are just completely not listened to. I think it's great that some recognition is given to this problem and that we realize that. There is a marginalized population. You don't.
I am gonna have to now give you the time on that one. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Helen Donahue.
Hi, I'm the parent of a member of the EHS class of 2025. She has been in the school system her entire life and we've been delighted with it. And we all in our family strongly support the work of the school board on equity and inclusion and we appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Helen. And John, I think I'm recalling you to be in here next. John Derban.
Okay, yeah, okay. Yeah, thanks a lot for this opportunity to speak to. I do concur with most of the comments made prior to this, so I could piggyback off those. My initial comments were going to be, I think the board moved in the right direction on this one. In that the complainants, they cited some things and they. In their in their complaint, they said that Liz Katie should, as she didn't point that out, but. As a member of the board, you should agree with the rest of the board. And that's not how healthy boards work. The boards have been on engaging healthy dialogue of disagreement. Ferreting out the facts from fiction and then coming to a final conclusion. So once again, I think the board did move in the right direction on this one and I do.
Thank you, John.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Diane Sheldon.
Hi, I just wanted to say that I disagree with the interpretation that the that the COI policy was not violated. Because Ms. Katie didn't make any money. The state representatives in the state make 12K a year. So there's very little money to be made in Vermont politics. Given that, why would the policy mention partisan politics if the requirement was that you had to make money on partisan politics? I also want to echo some of my concerns that the that the unredacted document was was released to the press. Before it was even made public and that concerns me that some perhaps some school board members. Are not being are not dealing with private information appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Annie Cooper.
Thank you. I would I would ask that the board have Erin Knox repeat her statement made at the beginning of the return from executive session. I agree with it wholeheartedly. I believe that Erin's interpretation of how this should go is appropriate, factual, true and. And really needs to be looked at for this decision this evening. I'm very concerned about the publicly leaked information and about how fast that went nationwide. And if that's not confusing and concerning to all of us here. Could be. And then. Thirdly. I feel strongly that our board needs to, I wish I had written Erin's words down. They were so true. It needs to be that we're listening to all sides and that there's not an opportunity for there to be partisan politics at play.
I'm sorry. Sorry. I hate giving the hook to people.
Thanks for being the bad guy, Erin. Sorry. Alexis, I'm gonna say it wrong. Did this? I apologize.
Hi, I would like to. Thank you. I would like to support some of the other comments that have been made about concerns about the leaked complaint that included the full last first and last name of the two complainants. I think that if you are trying to stifle dissent and tell a message that people should not in fact take action against you. Leaking to highly partisan internet, you know, outside of Vermont sources is one way to silence future dissent. It's a form of doxing and bullying and I find it highly concerning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Richard and Molly Jesse.
I just thank you for a few moments. I would just like to make the comment that in my view, the complaint itself. Yeah, had a sense of willing to it, I believe. And it's my opinion that there's absolutely nothing wrong with ruffling feathers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Caitlin Gregory.
Hi, I just like to say, I think Elizabeth Katie's doing an awesome job. I think she speaks for a lot of concerned parents. About this equity policy that segregates children into race groups. And I think it's totally awful. And I think LLK would be very, very ashamed what's happening in Essex now.
Um.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Smith.
Miss Smith? Yes, I have written my comments. Elizabeth was duly elected by her district. She ran on the same platform that is now being called into question. And as a conflict of interest, obviously, the voters in her district wanted her voice to be heard. Also, the mantra of Essex has been to allow all voices to be heard. Isn't that the mantra of equity? Yet her voice is being silenced because she disagrees. I believe that we need all voices at the table and I believe that that her voice should not be silenced.
Thank you. Yeah. Megan Humphrey. Megan, maybe you are muted still? Well, it doesn't look like they're muted, Megan. Are you still there? Megan, we might be having a technical difficulty. You don't appear to be muted, so I'm gonna move on to Rachel Khan. And I see Laura Taylor and Andrew Snyder. In that order.
Thank you. As a parent of two students in EWSD schools and soon to be a third and a community member. I not only fully support the equity work that is happening currently in the district, but I'm also deeply uncomfortable with the interpretation or perpetuation of the idea that equity work. Is synonymous with segregation. I think that that's a manipulation and the repetition of that. Makes me deeply uncomfortable. I I'm always comfortable with folks having different opinions about how. Schools and communities should function, but creating a misleading narrative about what the work is is not appropriate and it's not helpful for anyone.
Thank you, Rachel. Andrew Snyder. Oh, I'm sorry, Laura. I anyway, I the yellow hand's not up, but I do have Laura on the list too. So Andrew and then Laura. I don't see Andrew's hand anymore, so maybe not. Laura and then Gavin.
My name is Laura Taylor and I am one of the two community members who filed this complaint against Liz Katie. This is a serious complaint and we did not take the decision to file it lightly. Our concern is that Ms. Katie brings her partisan agenda into her role as a school board member, which has, I think she's. Proved my point over the last few days with all of this information showing up in these in these Republican news sources. And I do want to speak to the fact that I think that this is an unfortunate waste of the board's time and energy that you even have to deal with this. I hope this is resolved really quickly and so that the board can continue to focus on what's really important here. And that is educating each and every student in our school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Gavin.
Yes, hi, thanks for letting me speak. I just want to say, you know, I lived in Vermont. I paid taxes since 1987 into the school system and now I have a son. Who is ready to enter ninth grade and he was going to go into Essex High School. And basically, from what I've seen and what I've experienced from the school and your treatment of Liz Katie. It's just another opinion which and and CRT and trying to promote that. I am now currently. Trying to find alternative schooling for my son. That's where you guys have put me. I just want to let you know that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gavin.
And. Andrew?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, first I've learned something from this this meeting. That number one, board members give up their autonomy as a private citizen. Okay, then another to speak outside of the board. Secondly, I wonder how many other board members are intimidated by the actions that have been brought against Elizabeth Katie. And are afraid to speak up at the various board meetings. Okay. This other thing I was wondering, I haven't learned here, but how many dollars have been spent on this critical race theory and equity? You know, critical race therapy, according to Wikipedia says. That critical race therapy is loosely unified by two common themes. First, the white supremacy societal racism exists and maintains power through the law.
Andrew, I'm really sorry that you've reached your time limit.
Really?
You have.
Oh, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Feel free to submit in writing if you wish.
I do have.
Okay, thanks. Dan F. And then and then Megan and I'm pretty sure with the end of our 10 minutes.
Hi.
Dan F. Hi.
Hi, as a Latino, I embrace Liz Katie's opening of this conversation and dialogue. I think it's healthy. I think it's going to open up greater conversations. I don't, I think I I encourage her to speak her mind and I encourage. The people that are against her to speak her mind. I think this is a very engaging conversation that needs to happen in the public. And I'm not the slightest bit concerned about the complaint. And as I said, I haven't heard, you know, as a Latino, I'm all in favor of what she has to say and and her Aaron, her voice and then. You as the board declare in your voice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kim, I'm sorry. I've had my hand raised since the beginning. I just wanted to make sure that you saw me. I've been trying since the.
I'm sorry, I hadn't, Christina, but I will add you. So Megan and then Christina and then we are gonna. Close down public comment so the board can get on with action on the item. Okay, okay, go ahead, Megan.
Thanks, Kim. Sorry about the audio before. I have three kids in the school district and I'm. Really proud of this school district for doing work on racism and equity. When we were coming up, when I was coming up through the school system, public education, we were not taught. Important racial and ethnic history and being critical and being able to look at critical race theory and understand the root causes of racism. And the things that our students of color deal with in their lives is very, very important. And when we are taught things like communism in school, we're taught all sorts of different theories. It does not mean they're pushing a communist agenda. It means schools are exposing you to different trains of thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Christine.
Hi, folks. I just wanted to say that, you know, again, it's about perception. This is not about money. Liz Katie is the only board member that I have seen on this board and I'm very new to this. Who I can clearly see has a very specific ideology and agenda that she's sharing with these other news sources. As a board member myself for an HR organization, I would never ever participate in any other sort of discussion outside of the board. Right? You have to leave yourself open to be open to all of the opinions and I don't feel that she's there. I'm also ashamed to hear the words pro equity were used disparagingly in the letter of support from Ron Lawrence for Liz Katie. There is no reason why we shouldn't all strive for equity and I am here to help Essex strive for equity.
Thank you, Christina.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you. All right, so we're closing public comment and I'd like the board to return to the question at hand. We have a question before us regarding a formally filed complaint and a responsibility to consider it through the lens. And the confines of our equity policy as it exists today. Based on our conversation. The information that we've discussed and deliberated here. I am wondering if we are ready to call the question with a motion on how to proceed from here.
I still move, Kim.
And do you have the motion, Erin, or should I read it? Because I don't know whether the motion is to hold an informal hearing or to. Not hold an informal hearing.
I move. That we not hold. I move that we not hold an informal hearing.
Okay. And if I can add-
Anything else I need to add?
I was just gonna add language to it, if that's okay. Are you open to a friendly amendment?
Please do.
We move, Erin moves based on the board's review of the complaint made against Elizabeth Katie alleging a conflict of interest pursuant to Board Policy A1, Board Member Conflict of Interest, that the board not schedule an informal hearing regarding the complaint.
Yes.
We don't need a second. Is there any further board discussion? I don't see any hands. And so, board members, then, I will ask you, elected board members exclusive of Elizabeth, to, for those in favor of not holding an informal hearing, please signify by saying aye or raising your hand if it can even be seen. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? I'm not hearing any or seeing any, any abstentions. Okay. And so, the board will not hold an informal hearing based on this complaint pursuant to our policy. Thank you all for a respectful conversation about a challenging situation. And I think I'd like to take a minute to return us to a conversation and invite Elizabeth back as a board member into the conversation. On the 27th, I read through the Board Code of Ethics for school board members, and I think one of the things that has struck me is the, the concern that we certainly read and heard from community members, that somehow the board isn't interested in having diverse opinions at our table. And I don't think that could be further from the truth. I think it's our responsibility to have open, honest conversations at our board table, around those matters over which we have responsibility as board members. I think that we have a common expectation that that is in our roles and responsibilities, and we should be doing that. And we should feel free to have those conversations at our board table. I think that there are particular areas, and maybe, Beth, I don't know, are you able to screen share the Code of Ethics? It might be beneficial to just have another brief review, but a commitment as a board that we want to review this more deeply to have clear that we have a common understanding of what this means in terms of our work together and our responsibilities as board members. I don't know, Beth, if it was like in the board package.
Do you see that, or do you need larger?
There we go. Does that help people? So, I think we want to, the very top statement, I think, is critically important, that as a member of the Essex Westford, I think just call it School District, the stuff in the middle was what we were formed as back when we unified. We remember that our primary concern must be the educational welfare of the students in our district and excellent return on investment for taxpayers. We agree to conduct ourselves in accordance with the following commitment. And I want to point to the few of them. We act within the scope of our official roles. I think that we need to be clear that as a board member, we're not assuming any individual authority and that we're not giving directives to staff. Those are two areas I want us to be cautious of. No, our one employee is our superintendent, and there is good reason for there not being the confusion of direct outreach to individual staff members. We have occasions where we have staff that are providing support to us as a board on our bodies of work that may lend themselves to directly being involved in advisory groups or things that we're working on. But otherwise, those communications of matters that are within the board's domain would go through the chair and through the superintendent to the appropriate staff comes back so that the board operates at our board table, in our decision-making, within the realm of our responsibilities, with a common base of knowledge. That's the critical importance of that. So I wanted to point to that one in particular. Again, I think all of this is important, and is, I read all of it on the 27th, and we voted unanimously to adopt it. So, our highest ethical standards, again, get back to contractual matters, but I think that the notion of where we are in a space of needing to recuse ourselves if we are conflicted or there is an appearance of conflict of interest, I think is important. And I think, I'm just pulling out a few because I want us to dig deeply. I want us to have a deep conversation about what these words mean, and if they aren't saying what we need for them to say, to have a common understanding of how we operate together and how we hold our responsibilities as board members, even as we come to these tables with differing opinions and a multitude of hats that we wear to inform our conversations at this table, that we do so with respect for peers, constituents, and confidentiality considerations. We voice our opinions respectfully and we treat people with respect. We maintain confidentiality. And, you know, I, I do want to say that the board, in confrontation with our attorney, recognized that the complaint itself was not a confidential document, but rather that it contained within it sensitive personnel, if you will, information, and was shared with the board in preparation for the meeting, not because it was going to be necessarily hidden from the public, but there were pieces of it, as were referenced in this meeting, that contained personal information, and the content of which was of a somewhat sensitive personnel matter. If it were a staff versus a board member, it would have been an executive session, you know, privilege, if you will. So, I, I do want the public to understand our delay in, in adding it to the website and our interest in redacting phone numbers and other such personnel and personal, I'm sorry, information. I want to ask any board members if there are any questions regarding what we have here, not for a deep unpacking. We, I think we've handled the major action item on our agenda, but a brief discussion, if that seems warranted to board members, for clarifications that might be important for us to make now. Thanks, Beth, for sharing.
I, I'd like to just quickly echo something that you said, Kim, which is, you know, I too heard some of the comments, you know, about, I think it really couldn't be further from the truth that we would want everyone on this board to be in lockstep and all be in agreement all the time. I think anyone who serves on boards knows that a board functions at its best when people are able to come together and sometimes have differing opinions and work through that with the, with the common goal of the end result being what they believe to be obviously in the best interest of the district. And so, I mean, many times, there's conversations where I think we can all say have not been in agreement, and we work through it as a board because that, that's our job. So I just wanted to, to just add on to that, Kim.
Thank you, Erin. And I, I think I will add to that. We are guided by our vision, which was informed by nearly 100 or entire thousand people participating in the development of that vision when we formed as a district. And growing hearts and minds today and tomorrow, every day, every way, everyone is, is the commitment and not just words, and it is the driver in the work. So, I, I want, I want to echo your, your acknowledgement, Erin, of the importance, that these are important conversations to be having at our board table respectfully and asking questions within the domain of that, which is our responsibility as board members. Those open conversations and willingness to hear one another and our diverse opinions will inform the best decision-making. I think the challenges in having opinions preempt discussions, you know, preempt our public body having the opportunity to share and listen and learn from one another together. So I invite us to be careful with the perception of how we represent ourselves, because we, again, all wear a multitude of hats and come to our work with perspective and background that really makes for rich conversations and decision-making. And, you know, not unanimity necessarily. That has not always been the case on our board at any topic matter, but boards operate by a majority. Votes and positions taken are based on a majority, and that's important to understand as well. If we are not giving ourselves the opportunity for this conversation together in public at our board table, then I think we are, we are shorting ourselves the opportunity for rich and impactful decision-making. Any other board members with other questions regarding the Code of Ethics? And I don't see any. I want to thank everybody for joining us. I appreciate the interest in our work and how we do our work. I appreciate that this is the subject of this special meeting. And, you know, there, there are, we are recognizing that we need clarity for ourselves in understanding our policies and our, and our code of conduct and code of ethics, and I look forward to us working on that together as a board. And that our board meetings can be in a space of focusing on the work we're responsible for and be conducted in a respectful manner among ourselves and with the public who invest their time in joining us. If no other board members have any comments, questions, concerns, I think I would, do we need a motion to adjourn? One, while I have a notice, Scott.
Second.
Annie. Thanks, Scott. Annie, I don't know if that's a newer old hand, and if it's quick, we could probably go with it. Is that old?
It, it, no, it's new. I, I, I don't know if I misunderstood, but I'm hopeful that there will be some work done to wonder how confidential information was publicized that you hadn't put out yet.
I, I think what I was describing in my understanding of the situation is that it was, while not marked confidential, there were, it was, there was a reason why we took our time to post it today, because there was personal information in the complaint. And so, it was not sent to the board as a confidential document. It was a formal complaint. And, and so, I don't, I can't presume to know. The board had it, and I, and I, we were intentional about making sure that it was a sensitive personnel matter, if you will, as a board document, and it was not confidential. Our attorney said it was not a confidential document. But again, the version that's posted redacts phone numbers, and, and that was the delay in us posting it today.
I appreciate the position. I don't think I made my point clear. I'm only saying that I'm not certain how the information became nationwide publicly available when the school had not released it. That's what I'm confused about. And I don't know if you are also confused and concerned.
I think that that, it wouldn't be a topic for today's meeting, but I think we did talk a little bit about our Code of Ethics, and I think we have more work to do in that area. So, I think. Yep. All right, board members, I see us to be done for the evening. And again, very grateful for, you know, it's, this is new for all of us, and I appreciate everybody's patience and generosity in allowing us to do our best work to prepare, to hold this smoothly and respectfully, and I hope people walk away feeling that that was in fact the case. Thank you all for your interest, and we adjourned at 8:05.
Tomorrow night.
Yes. That's it.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thanks, Kim.
Thanks for attending.
Night. Yes, thanks, everyone.
Bye, guys.
Okay, good care.